Please, uh, rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no fear.
All right, well, the, uh, first on the hybrid work session, uh, board meeting agenda tonight is the presentation by the Green Policy Task Force regarding climate smart certification. So I'm not who, uh, who all wants to come up, but anybody who wants to come up is more than welcome to come chat with us.
Hi, Anne. Good evening.
Hello.
Mayor and we're, I'm only here to say that I want to thank you for putting the time into this and making careful consideration of something that we think will be powerfully beneficial to the future of our village and our village community. So thank you, and I just want to introduce Nikki and Judy, who have been making the presentation that was carefully put together by the Green Policy Task Force. So thank you.
Thanks. Hi, Emily. And I understand we have about 20 minutes still?
Yeah, sounds great.
Can we create a mic down by them?
Sorry, there's one minute.
In general, a microphone.
We have two.
All right, so, um, I'm here to talk about why, why the Climate Smart Communities program.
First of all, the need. The climate emergency has led to an urgency for both government and individual action. And the latest, as you probably know, the latest report by the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, the IPCC, the UN body for assessing the science related to climate change by the world's leading climate scientists warned that there are only 12 years left, and this was last year, so now they're 11, for global warming to be kept to a minimum of 1.5 centigrade, beyond which even half a degree will significantly worsen the risks of drought, floods, extreme heat, and poverty for hundreds of millions of people. The last four years were hottest on record. We've seen the devastation of hurricanes, drought, wildfire, and floods across the globe. And locally, the impacts we've seen are the continent issues with intense precipitation from storms, flooding, higher water levels, and increased numbers of disease-bearing insects such as ticks and mosquitoes. Since June 2012, when this board passed a resolution making this Climate Smart Communities pledge, the rate of warming is much faster, outpacing predictions, so there's even more urgency now to act. We need to both reduce greenhouse gas emissions and adapt to a changing climate that is changing more rapidly than the predictions. Local government has the structure and capacity to take action and empower individual action beyond what individuals can do on their own. According to Village Law, Section 4412, the village Board of Trustees duties include, quote, "good government of the village, its management and business, the protection of its property, the safety, health, comfort, and general welfare of its inhabitants, the protection of their property, the preservation of peace and good order, the suppression of vice," don't know about that one.
You can do it again.
"the benefit of trade, and the preservation and protection of public works," unquote. And I can't think of any of those, except for maybe the vice, possibly, that don't have, are impacted by climate change. Local government has the responsibility to invest in a smart, sustainable future for our community. So there's the need to take action. Why this particular action? Why Climate Smart Communities program? Why get certified under that program? It reduces greenhouse gas emissions. It saves taxpayers' money. It builds a place to live. It provides municipalities such as Irvington with a robust framework to guide their local climate action. It demonstrates and recognizes leadership on climate action. It offers concrete actions that address increased awareness and concern about climate change from village residents, especially the new younger population that we're seeing moving here, who are interested in the village's commitment in this arena, their active and sustainable lifestyles, they demand solutions and action and protection for the future, for their future and the future of their children. It also addresses the growing concern and activism of the children themselves. We've seen in recent months the activism of children locally and around the world. New York State's commitment to aggressive climate action, including the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act passed recently, means that support is available from municipalities to accomplish their climate goals. Participating in the Climate Smart Communities program and getting certified makes Irvington better positioned for funding and grants, DEC and other New York State grants. Dobbs Ferry received $300,000 in grants aided by their Climate Smart Community performance. $11 million is said to be available to certified communities. Without certification, Irvington will not be as competitive for grants and will still need to make the required changes anyway that are coming from New York State in order to meet the aggressive goal of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. The program provides a structured system for managing and analyzing data in order to identify opportunities to make positive change in energy use, et cetera, with potential cost savings. And you've already been doing some of that through Facility Jude and so on. And it provides, finally, it provides a framework for engaging and motivating, motivating community members to participate in the village's climate actions. And with that, I turn it over to Judy.
Right, excellent. So the most fabulous thing with all this is, well, we are well on our way. As you all know, on June 4th, 2012, our village trustees passed Resolution 212077, which was the adoption of the Climate Smart Community pledge, with great recognition with that pledge of actions that needed to be taken. And there's, there's a lot more that you've already done, because there is enormous understanding by all of us of what these implications with storms and climate and flooding are. And so the village has taken a lot of actions, taking both the pledge and going even beyond it. So we know that we've addressed things such as lighting and electricity costs with LED streetlight. And we know that what we've done is energy audits, and the village municipality has great understanding of where we need to improve. We know that we've created more interest and concern about walkable communities. Irvington has dealt with stormwater management. We did a survey, Larry, and we spent enormous amount of time kind of understanding it. We've had engineers and invested an enormous amount of money to be able to understand how we deal with these climate change adaptations. We have white-sized culverts and made some architectural changes. We have also been involved and engaged in recycling for public programs, which has been a wonderful collaboration with our parks and rec. And we've been able to work with Green Policy Task Force and be able to do zero waste at a number of events, and we're looking forward to more of them. We have an amazing school system where we have also been able, it's not municipality, but it's part of our village, obviously, to look, to really instate waste reduction in the schools, and it's been extraordinary. We have a farmer's market. We do, through Green Policy Task Force, amazing work. We do scrap collection and are involved in so many issues in tandem with the village. So we are so on our way that we can take what basically is the, beyond the pledge to the actual actions and probably check off and document a huge, huge amount of them, which means that we need to get started now. We know that our neighbor, Dobbs Ferry, has done this. They got their Bronze Award. Liz Draper has been the head of it, who's also an Irvington resident. What's enormously wonderful is that we have that insight and the ability for that kind of collaboration so that we can get her advice and counsel and get us well on the road to actually doing things that they've done. We also have, it was our front-page article in Enterprise, as we all know, is Hastings is now committed, absolutely committed, to walking towards the Bronze, Bronze Award. And, and we can't be left behind. We're already doing it. Why shouldn't we get the recognition for what we're doing? In addition to that, what's been important is that there is an infrastructure that we can work with here. Hastings basically has appointed their village clerk as their Climate Smart Community coordinator, and they're also setting up a Climate Smart Community Committee right now. They're recruiting and getting additional volunteers. And here's the most important thing, the reception has been extraordinary, and the momentum is here. And we all are worried. We're worried for ourselves, for our children, for our municipality, for our businesses. And so we have the structure, the infrastructure, as Nikki has said. So all we have to do is get on board and start the process. So, and the other fact is, I actually looked on the website today for Climate Smart Communities. So actually, there are over 700, there are close to 800 communities who committed to the pledge, and they're working very hard towards it. That is over 7 million people who are now involved in work that is related to Climate Smart Communities. As Nikki said, what it means is that we're in the game for grants for whatever we determine as a municipality is where we really need the help and financial support to be able to do that. So getting on board means we get opportunities for those grants. Not getting on board means we have less of an opportunity or access to it. So what are the next steps? First of all, we request the village to commit to moving forward on CPC certification to meet July 3rd, 2020 application deadline. That would be our hope and our dream. It's just, it's a year away. It's infinitely doable. Liz Draper was able to accomplish this within a year. If we need more time, that's accessible to us. But if we can start right now, that would be remarkable. We also need to ask the village to provide and commit resources. So we have models that have worked. Dobbs Ferry and Hastings' models are appointing the village clerk as a CSC coordinator that is responsible for developing strategy, tactics, implementation, and reporting processes for all initiatives developed for internal village departments and external community initiatives. So that is extraordinary. Again, we have a prototype of being able to do it. It will not be a financial burden, and this is a way that we can move forward. And in addition to that, also reap the benefits financially for the steps that we've taken to reduce costs for the municipality, which is pretty remarkable. The other opportunity, if that is not possible, because our esteemed board and mayor and administrators believe that there are issues with our staff and their commitments, is that we can appoint or bring in or designate funds for a part-time staff coordinator. And this person will be responsible for coordinating, facilitating, and helping us for all of our departments in all the specific areas we want to move forward on. The other aspect of this is that we need to appoint a CSC task force, as defined in our Priority Action One, and ensure engagement by every one of our municipality departments. We all need this roadmap, but we all need to follow it together in tandem in order to accomplish what is needed to do, that New York State has the goal to accomplish and is very, very committed to do. So in conclusion, the local government has both judiciary and official responsibility to take action, to protect the safety and health of the community. You know it. You've all committed to the pledge already. We just need to go out and do it. CSC is structured, it provides a way for us really to understand how to reduce GHG emissions, save taxpayers' money, conserve the resources of the government, and address future security risks through Climate Adaptation Plan, which is really essential for us. And the last thing I just wanted to say, because I don't want to take up too much more time, is, um, I'm trying to find the page here, rolling on, is that we talk also about our youth and our future, and how we want to be there to be able to make sure that future generations have the same luxuries that we've had, in terms of being a safe and beautiful and wonderful village. And there were some words said by Greta Thunberg, Greta Thunberg, who is this Swedish little girl who started this massive movement by children across the globe to be engaged and concerned about the future of our planet. And what she said, which is, I think, something I'm listening to, and I think we all are probably thinking about, is, "We children are doing this to wake adults up. And children are doing this for you to put your differences aside and start acting as you would in a crisis. We children are doing this because we want our hopes and dreams back." So if there's questions, we're here, our team is here, and we're happy to answer any questions we can, and let's get on with it.
How many points it takes to make Bronze? How many of these?
120. I see you looking at the checklist. The checklist can be a little intimidating, but not to worry.
I was thinking more like, it's like we started and completed a lot of these.
We have.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, that's, yeah, I was looking at this.
Like the LED streetlights. Thank you, Larry.
So many.
How far back does it go? Like, I just, I just happened to look at old Green Vendors Fair. So we did that, that in Earth Day 40. We had a Green Vendor Fair in Main Street School, and I was part of that. And there was money that even went to the village because of the cheese. Do you go back that far?
I'm not sure how far the look-back period is for some things. I know for this, for somebody who's getting recertified at a higher level, for a community that's getting recertified at a higher level, you can't go back to, too far. But for our, for the first level, for Bronze, I think most of what we've done should be, yeah.
I would also say.
So there is some year, is it up to you or up to some?
It's not up to us. It's up to, it's up to the DEC.
The DEC.
Okay, so they would know.
Yes.
If you go back 10 years, that's invisible.
They would know.
If you go back 5 years, that's okay. I just, it's curious.
Yeah, there's, there's a certain limit. We have to get the details on that, and we can get back to you on that. The other thing is.
You want to be ahead of the times. You know, you do it way before people did it, you get no credit for it.
Yeah, I know. But we can feel good.
But on the other hand, more, all the more reason to apply for certification before any more time passes.
That's right.
Yes, I have, I have no problem with applying, just personally, but I just, it seems like there are a lot of questions about just how it works, and then the staff issue, like, does it have time?
There's a lot of tools.
I have no idea.
There's so many tools. They help you understand it. They have a whole online web hub. They have a bunch of tools. They have resources and webinars. This is something that can be learned relatively quickly. And Liz Draper, again, is a great resource for us. Hastings will be. And she did a lot of actions that were so simple and so kind of not even to think about, whether it had to do with paper resources or incentivizing employees or whatever it was to get them involved. And I think the important thing here is that ultimately, the employees and staff in Dobbs Ferry kind of got excited about it. They kind of felt that they were making a difference. And so I think that's part of it, too. It engenders a whole different attitude and a sense of working together and feeling very committed as a municipality for both our internal work and ultimately the external work for the community at large.
Like Condi, I was struck when I read the list that we do a lot of this already, have done or have initiated. So I'm wondering how much of this is codifying it?
A lot of it is documenting it. For example, Liz had to take pictures of all the paired recycling and trash containers in municipal offices, in the village.
Okay, so that's, that's a perfect example. So in other words, if we have paired recycling and trash containers in the village office, it matters not the wit unless we take a picture of it and send it to the people who will certify us as the Climate Smart Community. Okay. I didn't mean that to sound snarky, but this is the process, and that's what we're talking about, how to document what we have already done, and then perhaps there are , you know, what specific other things.
Right, right.
I'd say you send a package of the documentation.
Exactly.
One time, not piece.
Yes. One done, that's one.
Right.
So the question I have is, just in terms of what, along the lines of what needs to be done, there's a number of these things, this is from version 3.4 of the certification tracking sheets. A number of these things are listed as under review, but they don't have points associated with them. So do you know the status of that?
So they've been added to the checklist since the first version.
I understand that. But there's not a value given to them at this point?
Not at this point, but, but by the time you submit your, your documentation, they may be. And when, when you said the July 3rd, 2020 date, there's an application cycle. So you can't, there are only three dates in 2020 when you can submit all your documentation at once. The last one in 2020 is July 3rd. After that, you have to wait till the following January. So, because they have a cycle of receiving the applications and reviewing them and submitting, and then, you know, sending your, sending their feedback.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Mayor, I, I just want to add in, Liz Draper was unable to come tonight, and she is on the Green Policy Task Force, but also the town clerk for, as you said.
Village clerk.
Village clerk, village clerk, right. And she led the process in Dobbs Ferry that's now on Silver, so has achieved Silver. But Liz did say to us that the most challenging piece of this is that it does take staff time. The staff will have to meet focused on this, not focused on other things that normally have been, you know, the total focus of our village paid staff, you know? They will, they will have to spend some time focused on Climate Smart Community and reducing carbon emissions and developing sustainable operations and infrastructure for our village as well as adaptation. The good thing about this is, it will really prepare us to be a resilient, strong, and prepared community for the challenges that might come ahead, as well as for the funding and resources that New York State is going to be increasingly making available due to their need to implement the aggressive goals of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. So, and that the staff will have so much support from the Green Policy Task Force, from the Irvington activists, from everybody in this room, and many, many more people, students as well. There will be lots of volunteer assistance and support for what the village needs to do to do this. It's just that the staff know what and how to do it. Do you know what I mean? So we need the staff's engagement at the high level, and then their direction for the volunteers. Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I ask a question? So would there be funding available for a part-time position if that were necessary?
The funding, the funding would come from the village. It's not a grant.
I was wondering if there were grant funds.
Not for that.
No, all right.
Not for that, no. But there are programs, for major programs that you're trying to.
There is funding for getting your certification process together, but that's already, the date's passed. So there would be funding for, through that process, I think, for, and consulting and that sort of kind of requirements. But we did miss the deadline for this year.
Yes. Through the consolidating and funding application or through some other process?
Uh, I, I guess it's, I don't know which one. I, I would have thought it was through consolidated funding, but it is a specific set of grants. There's two specific grants available from DEC as part-time standard.
And one could look at it as an investment. I mean, if you invest, the village invests in the support of a part-time coordinator, that should pay off in the eligibility for funding from the state.
And some of the cost reductions that are able to be accomplished and quantified.
I may provide a quick comment. So I just looked up Climate Smart Communities online, and based on a publication from New York State Energy Research Development Association Administration, I just wanted to clarify that to become a registered CSC, it's four points, certified is 120, and Bronze is 250, just as a clarification.
Send that again, please.
So to become a registered Climate Smart Community, you require four out of 875 possible points to become a certified Climate Smart Community. That's 120, so that was the number mentioned before. And for Bronze, it's 250.
So Bronze is 200.
Yep. And then on the website, these are all publicly available. There is a workbook, a first steps guide, a manual, there's technical support based on the portal, and of course, just all the publications that you can find online, the slides I'm looking at right now.
Great.
So what is our task tonight, to just decide?
If you want to move ahead and we can figure out all these details and things, so.
And can I just say one more thing? Since you passed the pledge in 2012, I think we've seen that this effort cannot rely on just volunteers and staff time that, I mean, the staff has done great work on some of these individual projects, such as the LED streetlights, which is wonderful, and, you know, recycling and so on. But the, the importance of participating in this structured program, this framework, is that it gives a way to leverage staff time and volunteer time in a way that I think we've seen hasn't, you know, I, I think we could have done much more if we had that focus. I think, you know, a lot of us volunteers on the Green Policy Task Force and other committees have struggled with, you know, getting direction and taking action that would be along these same lines, but is not the same focused holistic framework, you know, structured approach. So, you know, I think we've accomplished a lot without going for certification, but I think, and I think my, our committee would agree, that going for the certification will take us to a whole new level of achievement and the ability to communicate and engage our community.
So, Larry, can you tell us about the grant project that Irvington signed on to recently?
Uh, yeah, that only, it's a multi-jurisdiction grant that was applied for in order to basically establish greenhouse gas inventory, which we have not done. So that was.
Other communities, some kind of climate movement toward Climate Smart Certification, right? That was the second half of it.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mark, I can't.
It was a two-parted grant that, I don't know who was putting it together, some, I forgot the, the rest of the organization, but it has like eight or 10 municipalities signed on to it. So the first part of it is for greenhouse gas inventory, which of course, we're pretty far along in terms of, we have data, but it's never been analyzed or packaged.
Still looking through things.
But not just for the village, but not for the village, just municipal, but if you're looking at trying to do estimates for the community at large, there is software available.
I think this is just municipal.
Municipal. And then there's a second part that's toward, it sounds like working through some, some of the stuff, activity toward certification. So it sounds like a little bit of hand-holding, moving in that direction.
So we're committed to, if we get this.
Well, that's Larry to come up with the, the blue way forward or another. It's going to be, you know, Brenda, somebody else, and obviously we know our colleagues in Dobbs and Hastings to, to speed it along.
We're talking about this as if it's something normal in the process that the village might go through, but the current situation is really dire. It's really dire. The IPCC has had it, the U.S. National Climate Assessment has had it, at least by President Trump. We don't have a lot of time. So I strongly believe that the village should make this a, it's top priority in terms of both personnel allocation and in terms of funding. I mean, it's really got to be given top priority, because there's no other, there's no way to not justify, there's no way to justify not making it a priority, a high priority.
Yeah. I think we're good. Larry? I think the board generally agrees that we're doing this.
Yeah.
So we need to have.
We were, we're easing this swing.
I have an action certification committee. It seems like we're two idiot steps to talk.
So we need to gather information and have the information back to the politics meeting.
Thank you.
Hope the politics meeting, we'll have the information.
Take your volunteer. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Next up is a discussion of an Astor Street in the Beatway area. Can Larry, if you want to give a little background, if Condi wants to give a little background on this one, on the other.
Well, this, this is a discussion that in various ways has been carried on from even before, but definitely during 2014. This is the, this is the document that came out.
This is the document that came out of the Saratoga Associates Consulting, and it was called, still is called, the Main Street Streetscape Master Plan. And if you, it's still available online, I'm sure, and many of the projects that you've visited, very visible on Main Street, have come out of this as a framework, so we were able to go for grants, and the grant application was supported by being able to say, this is part of a master plan. It's not just, oh, we thought of this project yesterday and now we want money for it. So, yeah, I feel it served us as well. Part of it that has not been addressed but is an area very important to the village, of course, is the gateway that's referred to as the train station area or the Aster Street Buckout Street section of the village. And part of that plan, we have copies of the two pages from the master plan here, I don't know if it's in the hand desk of the...
It was attached to the agenda, it's supposed to be.
Yeah, right, right, right. So those two pages have some pictures and some ideas about how to make that section both safer, more aesthetically pleasing, provide information for visitors, have a reasonable kind of traffic flow. Obviously, there are a lot of commuters, there are a lot of residents, there's the businesses, there's the library, there's a lot of uses of that that make it a very important part of the village. So the question was, or for us, I guess, at this work session, is to think about, do we want to pursue any of the, looking at any changes in that area related to the actual Main Street, Aster Street square that everybody can envision. Besides that, related to that, has been discussion about two possible traffic flow changes. So all these end up connecting, and I guess the idea tonight is to just to think about, do we want, as a board, pursue any of this? Is this important enough to people to move forward with it? Do we need a consultant to do that? But the two traffic flow possible changes, one has to do with the extension of North Buckout Street as you're facing the bridge and planning to go to Bridge Street that has been suggested for several reasons, that instead of being able to go that way, you would have to make a left turn. In other words, it would affect greatly the traffic overflow of trucks and traffic on North Buckout. Because you wouldn't go that way, you would no longer go on North Buckout to get to Bridge Street, because when you got there, you'd have to make a left turn. That's one part of the possible changes to be part of this. The other that's come up in various discussions has to do with whether or not there's one block on South Buckout, the block between Aster and Main Street, whether that should be one-way. Now, we've heard that in various iterations, the Comprehensive Plan Group, I think, discussed that. So it's been suggested that that one-way be going south, so that when you got to, if you were coming north on South Buckout Street, when you got to the end of, when you got to yoga zone, you'd have to go down in front of the library. You wouldn't be able to go that way. So also, there's been discussion, you know, from this master plan and also from our wayfinding, that certain amenities be added to that section. There was a discussion in the gateway, information to have a kiosk with information in that area and changes in the crossing area. So we had some informal discussions with a traffic consultant, just to say that they seemed, it seemed like some reasonable changes, but you need to do some kind of test of it before you made a permanent change. I think I'm always now concerned about unintended consequences. You know, you're thinking about what seems like a good idea, make that area safer, make it more information for visitors, for people who are coming to the villages, as well as for residents, but by making some of these changes without some kind of consultant, are we, are we just jumping into something that might create some unintended consequence? So I throw that in for discussion among the board as well as, I don't know, some people in the public might...
Well, part of my interest in this scope, you know, I've been for quite a while thinking that we need to have a traffic study that really comes, does deeper analysis about the traffic along North and South Buckout, North and South Aster, especially in regards to some of the plans that we know are, you know, could happen fairly quickly, in quotes, in municipal time, like the sidewalk from, from in front of, because the truck building down along in front of the bakery and that, you know, that sidewalk. So anyways, my concern is that it's the traffic safety point of it, and I'm worried about throwing in too much other things that are, where we talked about, you know, like public amenities, because that cloudies, clouds the water, muddies the water, I think, in terms of a strict traffic analysis of some of the trade-offs, of some of the other things...
You mean about the kiosks?
Well, I mean, except as far as if there are changes to, you know, necessary changes to the layout of the sidewalks of the road in that particular area, right at the Main Street intersection. I think one of the things that we have seen that came out after the Main Street streetscape thing is whether or not the bumpouts or the enlargements at the corner are actually acceptable down on the corner of Main Street and, you know, Aster. So there are some of those kinds of issues. I just don't want to see, I mean, I would like to see, definitely like to see the traffic analysis being done. I don't know necessarily if it makes sense to overload it with too many other kinds of decision trees in the goal.
Yeah, well, I thought about that too, about, you know, what's too much, what's too little, and I was trying to take my direction from the original consultants to, you know, to look at. Crosswalks was one of their main ways to make those four squares.
If we look at a time, a cost and time estimate, I mean, I think that if you limit what it is you're trying to achieve beyond a larger scope of, you know, urban engineering, then you're, you end up having something that's deliverable faster and cheaper and you can get a real answer about what looks like it makes sense in terms of is a way to increase public safety in that area, because we all know that South Buckout is a major issue, safety-wise, we know that North Buckout is a major issue traffic-wise. So to me, those kinds of issues, I don't want to see them delayed for an extra three or four months as we start talking about, you know, throwing everything else in the kitchen sink, you know, the discussion.
Yeah, I've dealt with that dilemma in my mind too, that's why I've thought about whether or not those two changes need to be taken with the thought that four crossing areas, the square in front of the train, might also need to be enhanced because there would be more traffic there. So that's why I was pairing those two.
Well, I think, I'm generally in favor of changing South Buckout to one-way, and I'm in favor of forcing a left turn back, but it's going to increase the amount of traffic on South Aster and North Aster, and particularly at the train station around pickup and drop-off.
Right.
And the existing conditions, as noted by Saratoga, say that there's no clear drop-off for pickup there, and in their recommendations, they don't even talk about clear drop-off.
They talk a lot about...
So I tend to agree with Mark. I mean, even putting four crosswalks with the increased amount of traffic that may have to go in that direction, I tend to agree with Mark. I think a traffic study is going to be done and, you know, as specific as it can be with our, you know, perhaps our suggestions. They've got the Saratoga report to look at.
Right.
And, well, it doesn't talk about making any pickup or drop-off if there isn't a transit. With our initial input, I think that's okay, but I don't, I guess, it's a much different project if you say, do that level of, you know, urban engineering that if you're looking at strictly, you know, traffic implications. Well, I think traffic implications, that a crosswalks would take the safety into consideration.
I think the overall, the overall vision, what that's kind of described, it makes every kind of sense. It's a question of what, where do we put the boundaries at the moment? You know, the big picture, I think what you described is great. Clearly, the traffic pattern is paramount important because that's safety, but that, it seems to me, and I think I'm agreeing with both of you who have spoken, that you can't just do that in a vacuum without addressing some of these other issues like buses. There's another big issue here, which is a much more long-term issue, but DPW might be where, not be where it is forever, and if that gets moved, then there's going to be whole other kinds of issues about people maybe coming from the train, going to businesses over there. So this is what we need to, what can we reasonably do now that doesn't compromise the bigger picture of what needs to be done over time? And my answer to that is...
There's always jackhammers, you can take out what you put in if you have to, for five years. I mean, I'm being, we're partially serious, but the changes you make now, because we don't know if they can make it because of...
Right, so it might make sense to go with the things that aren't, that can be reversed fairly easily if they don't work or for the need changes over time, so the traffic pattern. Larry, I remember we were talking when we were in the Comprehensive Plan Committee on our, or committee, we stood outside on Estuary, it was like, yeah, it should be one-way. So it sounds from what you've described that those two changes make sense. Certainly, I think, a better way of dealing with the pickoff, the drop of a pickup to the train, whether it's a designated area, but I think what we can do with the least investment at this point, knowing that we need to evaluate the change we make, makes sense.
So the one thing that really I question, and I don't know what to think, but of the two changes, the one that I know would be, everyone would like to see a change of traffic load on North Buckout, what I don't understand is how you force people to only take a left turn when they come out the end of North Buckout at Bridge Street and Aster. I mean, short of blocking...
Short of blockers.
You're not going to let cars turn from Aster, so I've got...
Wait, wait, no, if you were, can I speak or...
Yeah.
No, no, I mean, as I, I mean, we've talked through this and I'm really pleased that you're taking this up.
Can you speak?
Yeah.
So, if you were, is that better?
Yeah.
If you were to put some kind of bollards or something like that on the north side of, I guess that's Bridge Street, right?
It's Bridge Street, we call it North.
Yeah, 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 no, it's, as you go around North Buckout, you know, if you were to put some kind of blockade there that would force people to turn left when they came down that street, you put up a sign that said local traffic and post office traffic only on North Buckout, people would get...
I mean, at Main Street.
Yeah, 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 on North Buckout and Main Street, and people would quickly start to understand that it was impossible to do a drop-off. And if, I haven't seen police down there, and for a while, there was one of those speed signs, but in the morning, in probably September after Labor Day, would be a good time for the police to come down there and take a look at the situation. It is truly like a speedway down there. People go slowly down Main Street and then they turn the corner, they go 40, 50 miles an hour down North Buckout for that little short stretch in order to make the train or whatever, so that would...
Can you describe it again, because I can't visualize what you said? Step us through it. Where are the changes in your...
Okay, so the changes would be, so North Buckout, as you know, is a very small street, right? And then there's a street that descends down towards the bridge that goes over the railroad tracks at the bottom of that, which is the intersection of Bridge Street and North Aster Street. There are two lanes, okay, currently. So one of the lanes right now is a left-turn lane, the other lane is a three-lane, and that's what commuters use to go and drop people off at the train, so if...
And go to work there.
What?
And go to work.
Yeah, and go to work there. So I think this idea may well have some opposition from the restaurants and the owner of Bridge Street, but...
Where are the bollards going?
So they would go on the northern lane, on the, as you're going, looking towards the bridge, it'd be on the right lane.
Isn't there a Matheson Park driveway there, you see that?
Before that.
Yeah, no, it's before that, so people would come up on North Aster Street and they could go to the private driveway there.
Okay, so just being a scuff law for a moment, why wouldn't I just drive around the bollards and make illegal...
Well, sure, I mean, why don't they go walk through your window? I mean, you know, people can do whatever they want.
A second, you just said it yourself, you don't see police down there enforcing stuff.
Right, right.
There'll be a time...
No, I mean, I think that would...
Run the bollards.
No, no, I know, but I think it would be a big disincentive to do, and so, and also because the flow of traffic would, most law-abiding Irvingtonians would go down Main Street, come up North Aster, and that would preclude people from doing that, yeah.
I think after a certain amount of time, people would know.
Yes, certainly.
Right, and some...
Good enforcement there.
Yeah, no, I think police presence for these things works wonders, as we've seen, certainly, when I've seen police presence, for example, down by the library to stop people rolling through those stop signs and giving them tickets, that brings an end to that kind of behavior very, very rapidly. So I'm very, you know, 100% in favor of that. I know there have been some talk of reversing the flow, I think that's a big, big mistake to make it one-way the other way, because the left turn off of North Buckout, it's awful on the other streets, but the amount of traffic on North Buckout would be huge, and I think that would cause accidents. I think speed bumps would just result in all of our cars getting beat up by people who went over them too quickly, so, but the situation as it currently obtains really is, it's not good, and I think it's just an accident, you know, a pedestrian accident waiting to happen, so.
I mean, I think coming back to kind of the big picture here, I mean, I think that the one-way, you know, we've talked about this for years, we, I think we've kind of debated this way, it should be...
We didn't have to talk about the other, the other one, yeah.
The other side, this side to me is, A, that the residents have all asked for, and I think we can't really, there's not like a, there's not really a great counter-argument to it, except if you want to get to the train quicker, but, you know, I always say, if everyone looked up five minutes earlier, it'd be a great world. But, you know, I think that, I think County's right, where she says, the only thing we have to worry about are unintended consequences, so, you know, are we going to have, is there going to be too much traffic if we have everyone go down, you know, in front of the DPW garage when it's the time the DPW garage is coming in and out? So I think, and I think we should also, I also think there's going to be increased traffic, obviously, on South Aster, so people crossing through the train that are walking down Main Street. So you have to, I think you do have to look at all three pieces.
That's why I wanted to, yeah, put them together.
And I think, you know, some of these other nice-to-haves, the kiosks and things like that, those we can almost figure out on our own after we have kind of the safety parts.
I mean, they're written in the picture and they're in our plan from the gateway, so we don't have to really see them.
So if the kids weren't put in the right place, so let's wait until we have the others.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the other thing I'd like to see though, I mean, I think the one thing that would be worth kind of, is thoughts about a better drop-off situation. Now, the problem is, any kind of drop-off situation you have there is going to lose parking spots most likely, so there's going to be pushback on that.
Great, so that's, I mean, there are so many questions, and I argued with myself about expanding the mission and contracting the mission, but I came up with the two, the two parts of the traffic change and attention to the safety crosswalk issue in front of the train station. I would love to see, and, you know, the reason we've gotten some of these other projects, the aqueduct in the front of the village hall, was because we did have this as a framework, so it's always good. we did have this as a framework. So it's always good to be able to have, you know, have this to look at, look back at it. It's a question of how much do you, I really think we need a consultancy. I, I, I think we could try, I mean, with the advice we had from our traffic friend, we could try those two traffic changes in a trial way, but I, I'm a little worried about the effect on the increased traffic. So I.
I have a couple things to do with the DPW garage change coming in the next one, 30 years.
Yeah. We can't wait for that.
A, I don't want to wait for it. And two, I don't think this is wasted because we now know about the traffic flows there. So we're talking about change of use.
Right, right, yeah.
At least a baseline. And if it is in the next three to five years, which I hope it is, or one to five years, you know, we, we already have this information as well. So it's not like it's completely a waste of time and, you know. So I think that, I think we do need to study though, because I, I think that, you know, I think not only is it going to be tougher on Station Road, but what happens to, I mean, Station Road, not just in Astor, but Station Road, Buckout the other way, like what's, what's the change in, in, in the flows and what's the, you know, what's the capacity? Because it's not like you go down Buckout and it's still tight. So I think that, you know, we have to make sure that, that most of the traffic isn't going to likely end up going that way.
The one thing I, you know, got to say is just the notion of creating more turns off of Main Street rather than turns onto Main Street is, you know, because of the visibility at the corner issue, that's really.
We're kind of removing one, terrible one.
Yeah. We'd be eliminating one of those. I mean, I think, I'm sure many people have seen almost major accidents of people coming out of North, of South Buckout to Main Street. It's, it's so hard. It's hard on the other streets, but there isn't as much traffic. So I guess it would just be a question of the scope of a consultant. And we can, you know, discuss that, you know, we're kind of.
We'd have to get engineers to give us an estimate and so.
Do you want to have anybody else comment?
Sure. People want to comment.
Right. Any other comments?
Hello, Timmy Danny from Hastings. In meetings in Hastings, I often reference the kiosk that you currently have at the top of Main Street in Irvington. I guess it's a kid, the old one. Correct. Now, when you're talking about a kiosk down by the waterfront or down by this, this station area, is this going to be something, when I think of a kiosk where there's a little roof and people have papers, or is this, was this an electronic?
We know exactly what they would.
Well, that was, I didn't hear it stated, is it an electronic thing where your buttons are pushed and there's not, you don't have to worry about papers flying about and so forth? Since you were just on the tail end of the Green Policy Task Force, I was just wondering that, you're not going to have papers, you know, rolling down the road?
There's a way to see them. It's good to ask, but there's a, there was a, a design, it was called the Way Finding Project. And there are pictures of all the different types of wayfinding pieces to gradually use in Irvington. So they have a certain structure and a certain look, but, you know, that's not a major part of this. This is just, you know, that's the, that's a little part of it.
As opposed to this paper, you probably have talked about having scannable QR codes that you could then, you know.
This is something I've advanced from Hastings as well, modeling what you guys have done.
Oh, yeah. You guys could, you can, I'll give you, I think I can tell you where to find the, the pictures of, of all the wayfinding signage.
We have, we have wayfinding in Hastings.
Yeah, right. I know yours is a certain style, but anyway, we're all for the topic. So.
So we'll see something.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Is there any chance of reaching out to the NTA about pedestrian.
Where's their line?
Safety improvements or?
On the air portion? I, I think their portion is, I don't think there's a lot of real estate on their portion. The last survey I ever looked at, but that's years ago. I couldn't swear to it.
The, the parking right along the track, is that, where's, where's the property, where's the, the property line?
The property line is, is a few feet behind the metal guardrail.
Really?
Yeah.
So, I mean, if, if, if we are defining the parameters of a, of a consultant, I mean, I guess, you know, you'll write up a possible thing. We can see what else might need to be added to it, but.
No, I have the three elements that are concerned about.
Okay, good.
The traffic's flow, the drop-off, and the pedestrian, interaction with pedestrians.
But it wouldn't, wouldn't hurt to know where the line is. Hope we don't need a consultant to tell us that. I'm sure we can figure that out. Okay. Oh, wow. Is another comment permitted relating to this topic?
Sure.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Come up for Mike.
Really, you're fine with it.
Pretty loud. So the, the traffic consultant, what I would just ask, and this is part of, and the Green Policy Task Force is as well, part of the Climate Smart community is that we make sure our streets are complete streets so that there is safety for both walkers, bikers, as well as motor transportation. And so I would ask to make sure any consultant that's hired about these reconfiguring has a complete street focus. That will also cut down on the number of people who are being dropped off at the train. I hear all the time from people across Broadway that they wish they could walk or bike more safely. And if they could, they wouldn't have to be dropped off at school or, or at the train station as frequently. So I would just ask you to keep that in mind. And also, any of this reconfiguring, you know, it's fairly close to the river and also it's very steep. So all these things I know you already keep into consideration, but we need to make sure that we're always thinking about the effect of extreme weather events and things like this. And overbuilding, I don't favor. Large medical practices, they're everywhere. I'm not so sure we need that sort of thing here. And in fact, there are many studies that the, the benefit of cooling and all sorts of benefits of trees in terms of how they increase property values and all those sort of things. So in terms of the nature scape of any of this building that's permitted, we want to make sure that it's, it's really going to be resilient to, to our changed climate. You know, we have to think about that in everything we do now.
Okay. Oh, really? They're all over the city. Review of bills priorities. So you have a revised draft. They've been circulated, obviously, in the last several weeks, but we have a revised draft there. There was really one suggestion. Connie, was your suggestion?
Oh, yes, yes.
I mean, that's, that's your own.
That's what I, right. And, and the, the page that, that we had before is in here, right?
Three, two, C.
Okay. So, yeah. This was, this was part of number, oh, yes, right. Ongoing, oh, right. So it is. So that was, do we want to discuss that or if, if it's clear to everybody? I was just adding back in reference to possible additional historic districts that might be of interest or, you know, some other section of the village. And I've just said, continue to consider the advantages of additional historic districts within the village.
I think we had a long-term goal.
Yeah, that's under ongoing initiatives, one. We, you know, we're taking out certain parts and adding other parts, but that part dropped out and I just wanted to put it back in. I didn't want to lose sight of the possibility of other historic districts. We know from, from Dobbs Ferry that they've had a historic district and they're looking at a, a second historic district. So it's not out of the question. It's not a major thing.
The only problem, the problem I have really is just that there's nothing on the radar screen now. These are priorities for, this is our priorities for the year, right? And there's nothing right now. It's an ongoing initiative, I know, but there's nothing, you know, rising to the fore right now. And I just, I'm a little concerned about adding in too many.
Lines and lines.
If we're looking at that, we could say, well, with affordable housing, we are looking at, consider opportunities. I mean, some things we're obviously going to continue to do. This is our focus this year. It's not a big deal.
Right. Well, I have actually been thinking actively and having some conversations about this. And back when we still had the active historic district committee, there, there, there was discussion about other historic districts. And it was in there and I just kind of inadvertently took it out. Didn't really want to take it out.
So you're putting it back in?
Yeah, putting it back in, in that case. Sorry. But then there were some other changes. I, I think everybody's looked at this already. I don't know.
But this is the, this one reflects all of the various.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
The one thing that I feel strongly is missing is I think that you should mention this climate action certification. It should become a primary focus kind of priority rather than, I know that we have, the Climate Action Plan is an ongoing priority, which is nice, but I feel like to reflect the urgency that the community is asking us, we should boost that certification process up higher in terms of attention.
We somehow almost beef up number, number seven on there, you know, on the areas of primary focus.
Yeah, you're making it good. Have a certification. I just don't know how Larry, how any of us feels about this. Sure, it could be called out on number seven as a, as another, you know, a common instance. Right? Another example.
Sure.
So you could enhance number seven under areas of primary focus with reference to this new initiative. I think that makes sense.
Well, it's an initiative that we said we were implementing in 2012.
In this new way of approaching that old initiative.
I would make it the first part of the priority.
Exactly.
The other ones, yeah, the other ones are.
Are examples of, I think, in terms of.
Think you can almost say included.
Thank you.
You, you all discussed this at a meeting I missed.
We kind of did, but we didn't talk about it too much as you guys. So we just gave a dramatic.
Oh, okay. I always think this is an important process we go through every year. I really like looking at this. I mean, Brian and I have done this 10 times now, right? Looking at priorities, but it does, it does help. So look at them.
And seeing the kind of entity or scorecard for how things came along, what are still in process and what was successful. I find that actually very.
I almost think that we should maybe do this as a quarterly check-in, you know, like just kind of every, every three months, we, one of the workshops, we take a quick look. You know, I think it's, sometimes you're going through that, you know, and I think it's, we should probably put the discouraged advice back in here. Was that was a word at the end?
I mean, we, we look at the, the list that Larry does with the red and green.
Yes.
You know, that, that.
We don't discuss it publicly.
We don't discuss it publicly, but we, we look at, you know.
But I think that that's maybe a good, because I mean, because sometimes it's like, you know what? You know, oh, we forgot about number four or whatever.
But I was struck, and I know we've had some back and forth about this, and looking at last year's, we really accomplished a lot. And Larry, you said that's on the village webpage. Because I think that's important for people to know, not just that we set goals, but we also actually track what we've.
I think that's another thing I was trying to get at. It's useful. Maybe we, we should, is that published on the other?
Not the most recent year, because I'm going through all this.
Yeah. So last year's and this new one. And we can get a good link to it. So we're going to, maybe not have to search for it.
Do we want to maybe, you know, take this next couple days and look through this and then formally adopt it on the, or we have to.
Yeah, typically adopt it.
So if we have any more changes, we can, we can talk about it. Yeah, but.
Yeah. Not until 2020.
I'll circulate. I think we missed it. Sorry. August 5th, there's always a deadline. Next year's business.
But only if it's a pool meeting.
I agree. All right. Anyone else have comments on this? Otherwise, I think we're pretty close, right?
I think it's actually.
Yeah. We'll plug it in.
I think everybody in the village agreed it.
Update on additional county sales tax revenue, as some local papers have covered well. The, the Westchester County has increased the kind of non-city county sales tax in a way to offset the property tax increases that are, you know, obviously very high. Westchester, whether it was one or two in the country, I think people debate, but I think, you know, our taxes are among the highest. I think that's fair to say. This is, you know, it's kind of an interesting way to look at it because it is an additional tax. You know, now even you buy things, you're going to be paying 1% more. But, you know, I think if we're disciplined with this money, we can use it to reduce property taxes, which is, you know, it's not like you have a choice if you can pay those or not. You have a choice if you're going to buy a, you know, expensive piece of clothing that's going to be 1% more expensive at the, you know, somewhere. The, the reality of it is we're getting in this year, a couple hundred thousand dollars that is basically a fully unanticipated, you know, windfall is not the right term, but unanticipated revenue. And, you know, I think the question is, what do we do with that? If we do nothing with it, it was going to our reserves, which we can use to, you know, offset costs, which we've done in the past. You know, we could also use a portion of it for projects that we can accelerate into this year. You know, Larry and I have had some, and Connie as well, some kind of preliminary discussions on that. I mean, we don't have to decide this tonight, obviously, but, you know, I think we just wanted to view this not just as a chunk of money that came in, but focusing on using it for the intended purpose, which I think is going to be quickly forgotten, which is to offset property taxes and not just to spend it on, on something new and shiny. This year's, I think, is a little different because our budgets are obviously already set and the money's kind of coming in and it's on a sign. So I think we want to make sure that we spend that well this year to, to have impactful things, maybe with longer life, you know, lifetime, because our projects. One thing Larry and I spoke about preliminarily already with Connie as well, was potentially using it to repave some additional roads. We're going to have paving done already. We had our engineers update our 2014, 2016. 2016 study that basically went around and graded all the roads between one and 10, 10 being the perfect road that you could land a plane on.
Do we have any of those?
There's other days too. How much money? You said 136,000?
No. So, right. So the exact number, not, not exact, these are all estimates, of course, but the, based upon the estimate, anticipated unbudgeted additional revenue for this year is 286,000.
To the village?
To the village.
Not, not including?
Not including the village. So, you know, there's, there's two levels, as the mayor mentioned, there's two levels of, of money that will be considered in the budget process. This year is completely unanticipated. As you know, during the budget process, the legislation had not been adopted this four sign. And again, you had to adopt your budget back in April. So this money's unanticipated. The following year, for next year's budget, you will be looking at an additional revenue to add to your budget. And, you know, and the estimates are on the order of about 340,000. So, you know, certainly that will go a long way in helping with your tax rate here. So, you know, but the question is, with this unanticipated funds, you know, the thought was to strike some sort of a balance between, it's a little over 2% of our budget compression. So the, the thought was just try to strike a balance between, you know, addressing an important infrastructure need, like moving on your, on your paving plan, or, and while still keeping money aside for next year's budget that you can use to further reduce the tax impact.
What about things like going from two charging, even charging heads to four, for instance, at the?
All on the table here.
I mean, we, we're asking kind of what the scoping of, the costing of certain things. Because it seems like using pavings, extensions could use up. I don't know what the, really trying to say half of it or what happened to.
No, I think, I think we're, we're in the, in the, in the range of about 100,000 of this unanticipated 286, you know, to look at accelerating the paving program by that much. So that's, that's the order of magnitude leaving the balance or.
So something like the increasing the parking ads, that we don't know what that would be at this point.
I mean, these locations, these locations different, but it, that would range between 25 and 30, 20 and 25,000 depending on the location.
Because the reason I'm asking is because you've already been wiring the first two to the, to the public electric, electric grids and the main cost is sun. Now you're just adding up running extended feed to the next two parking.
Oh, dedicating more in those.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So I think it would be a much, a much, potentially a much cheaper kind of expansion if we thought it was worthwhile.
Right. Yeah, the, the heads are not that expensive. So you're probably talking about, you know, $10,000 expense in each location, but.
you know, $10,000 expense in each location, but I'd have to reconsider the library a lot, so I'm not sure.
I've not even been thinking about that. I'm just thinking about.
Yes.
I'm thinking about, whether the fact would make a lot of sense as it's central to the, conceptually more central. It's just something to think about if it's, if it's not that big of an addition.
And I think we also saw paving, you know, it's kind of coming up soon.
Yeah.
So if you're gonna act on this fairly quickly. Yes, we also did talk about the rest of the coordinator money. How much it is, and how much bring this makes you do, but, you know, I don't think we'll get that much.
I mean, the minute, I mean, the minute you have this opportunity, all of us up here could think of, you know, things that we would love to have. So when Brian and Larry, when we talked about paving, you know, it's not a very sexy way to spend your extra money, but it's certainly something that we have a plan for and, and it's not just.
The reward is that you made it in the also, right? It's just because you guys talked about paving.
No, it doesn't, Mark, it doesn't. I just.
You want to make sure that we're kind of getting.
No, we're not. I'm, I'm just saying that if, I, I, when I heard paving, I thought I could think of a lot of other things that I would like to make a list of.
Like, we need to be more sustainable, rather than.
Permeous pavement. We don't have to decide this change.
Right, no, we don't. But I'm, I'm, we're talking.
I wanted to give every resident a hundred bucks. That was Larry's idea, figuring the mayor. It was gonna be like, like Fomo did right before the election. We'd be plenty of money if my picture was just great at town hall.
I mean, if, if, if there was, if there was some thought that.
But anyway, that's just kind of the whole process, that everyone come up with their best ideas, you know, we gotta figure something.
Everybody send in a list, no.
He will end up spending 500,000 of the 286 that we had. But that's, I mean, he just kind of wanted to talk about that and, you know, mention the money that's coming in. You know, it's not just brown money, it's money that we're gonna be paying taxes for in different ways, that, you know, the village has to spend wisely to, you know, offset costs, to reduce taxes.
Certainly, that, just how things are gonna be going in the next couple of years in terms of balancing the budget.
Right, exactly. And this is obviously gonna be a big part of that. I mean, because healthcare costs going up, you know, 7 to 15% every year. Last year, we were lucky on retirement, it didn't go up very much. But, you know, this, the 340,000 is almost where we started last year's budget without spending a penny.
Right.
You know, so I think that, you know, that's what we have to consider next year. That 340 is gonna be spoken for, not by our ideas and our paving, but by, by kind of inflation in healthcare and, and retirement, so unfortunately.
This is the end of the work session, and now it's an official meeting.
We're transitioning. I'm gonna put my jacket on now.
Okay.
The, we, the only mess that I had is that we, we just found out in the last day or so that Pam Bernstein's actually gonna be retiring. So I know that you've, at the end of August, I think, maybe just want to talk a little bit about her great contribution to Irvington and the library.
Go for it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think it's just been, I mean, I've only heard unbelievably positive things, including Connie getting book recommendations. You know, so it's just, it's just another kind of long-term, great public servant that's, that's moving on. We just want to acknowledge her at the meeting and, and wish her the best and.
If you're down at the library and you see Pam Bernstein, just say hi and thanks.
Why don't you?
In the office.
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't have, I didn't have any ideas, sorry. Anyone else have any announcements? Otherwise, I'll move on to correspondence. First one's from Josh Reitkon. Dear Mr. Trustee, Village looking at allowing long-term parking on South Buckout Street, North of Station Road. As you're probably aware, there's a waiting list for parking permits. I'm waiting on the waiting list. Other Metro North LAZ Parking Lot has, said that has very few long-term daily spots. Daily spaces are usually taken by ADMs, so still over commuter parking goes South Buckout Street nearby streets. So there's currently no permitted long-term parking on South Buckout Street, so commuters are getting ticketed and people are being penalized for going to work. If long-term meters were installed on South Buckout Street, then people could pay the village a reasonable amount of parking for the day instead of excessive parking ticket, $25. LAZ charges $4.35 a daily parking meter spot. Certainly, the village should demand that LAZ have more metered spots, so there are lots, so people do not park on South Buckout Street, turn around and stay on the train. Well, there's a waiting list for LAZ parking permits. It seems there are plenty of empty spaces and a lot that could be used for daily parking. I think we're seeing this problem. This is not one that's easily solved. As someone who's been on the permit list at both Ardsley for over a year and for a reason for about 18 months, my wife has to call me up every day or walk down the train, which isn't fun, but, you know, every, if you take away permit spots, you're creating problems for people that have permits. And if, you know, if you take away street parking, it's not like we have empty streets. As we'll find out in the next batch of letters, you know, parking.
Put, put long-term meters on South Buckout, is that what I'm?
That's right.
I still hear they're trying to build in that, or?
I don't think it's empty during the day. You know, I think it's pretty full. You know, so I think that those spots are all used. I don't think there's a lot of empty areas where we could add, add spots. And, you know, when we added some, at Ardsley, we had people complain that, you know, they could use the permit spots. I think August is a, you know, there's permit spots open now, but this is August, so you go back September 14th, and those will be gone as well. So it's a ongoing problem. I'm happy to hear some creative solutions, but for now, it's not something that's easy. Speaking of parking, Main Street parking, Salon Bellagio, Giulia V, the Sotheby's, Salon Ziti, and Mimas. First one's from Salon Bellagio. We have seven people working and having major parking problems since you changed the parking regulations. We need more six-hour spots back. Please put them back in efficiently. Business are having a lot of complaints from customers to, you know, signed by folks at Salon Bellagio. From Giulia V, Sotheby's, to whom we make concerns, since the new parking regulations came into effect, it's affected our office as employees, agents, and clients. Our clients meet their agents at the office, whether it's initial metering, going up to appointments. Our clients, as well as employees, have gotten multiple parking tickets because of the new rule. Two hours is not enough for parking in the side streets. It's almost impossible to run out every hour and a half. In an hour, 45 minutes to find a new spot. If you run out of spaces fast, please change the parking block. Thank you.
Six-hour spots in every.
On one side of the state, on one side of the state.
And all, and all their Main Street opposites at the base, all the way down, six-hour?
Yes.
On one side or?
On Main Street, so.
Both, both sides. On Main Street, both sides.
There's not a drain parking. To the board trustees of Irvington, the new parking rules do not work. I'm trying to run a business and it's impossible to move a car every hour and a half, two hours, and have to move to another spot. I'm in the middle of a haircut or shampoo and have to run out and have customers sitting. I mean, people I've spoken are having the same problems. Why were so many six-hours removed? The streets are only three houses, have no driveway. Does this make sense? Do you want to put the people who work here out of business, please review this. It's a major problem, that's salon thing. And to the village board, the parking is one of the problems, is the change. You know, I think when we, when we did change the parking, there are gonna be some bumps in the road. We've asked the chief in line, businesses and any other businesses that had issues, to try to work on some solutions. But, you know, I, you know, I think we're gonna potentially find that balance, but I think people that live on the side streets are happy that the area we're parking on their streets now. So it's, you know, we solved one problem, we created a different problem.
The other thing is people don't break and say, it's working great, we love the change. It's just not human nature. What was the ultimate balance? Did how many six-hour spots?
All the sides.
Even, and we moved?
No, it wasn't even. There was most definitely a switch, a shift.
Or two hours and six.
Of the number of sixes that got changed to twos. And there was also a, a little bit of a difference between what was done on the lower part of Main Street versus what was done on the upper part of Main Street. So there were more spaces up the hill that were changed from six to two.
Okay.
Comparative to the lower part, because we did create a few sixes down in the lower part, so.
You created.
So where?
Ziti is where.
She's pretty far down. She's by the, the.
Sotheby's, right.
Sotheby's. Right next to them. It's, yeah. So it's, it's, I think, one, I know you'll talk to the businesses, but we had discussed the aqueduct lot for daytime use of, of people who work in the Main Street area. They don't need overnight, but they, so if you, if you're the employee, you're there for more than six hours. But most customers, I think, are, are thinking was businesses need places for their customers. And most things are two hours. There might be some hair things.
Hair extensions.
So it depends. Like, when you do need your hair, it might take more than two hours. But, you know, we're certainly sympathetic to their.
But I think they're saying to just.
We'll, we'll reach out and understand where they're located, what the issue is.
Right, yeah.
We never did business permits, right?
No, we didn't do that.
Back on the planning stage.
Public comments? Anything that's not on the agenda, so not the public hearing, but anything else? Please.
Hello, Timothy Downey from Hastingsville Hudson and a small business owner of Aesthetic Landscape Care. Mid-July, July 17th, I received a letter from the village of Irvington. This came on the heels of a lengthy conversation with a nice gentleman from Irvington back, I guess around the end of June, middle end of June, in which he contacted me, reached out from Irvington, to discuss and get my input about the blow law, how it was working, the changes that went over the seasonal restrictions. And we had a very productive conversation, I thought. He was very open to some of the statements I had. I was in a great agreement with many of the points that he said, how I seen the blow law being violated quite frequently. And so when I received this letter from the village of Irvington, it initially went over the first paragraph or two was just a repeat of what I already knew. And so I set the letter aside, but I came back to it several days later, and I read through all the way to the bottom. And towards the bottom, I read something that was greatly disturbing. And in the bottom, there's a discussion here where the words are, based on this, if you continue to do business in Irvington, you should plan to deploy electric leaf blowers, which are not subject to any of these restrictions. I, I think what they were implying was there would be a total, I think they were suggesting there would be a total banning on, on gas-powered blowers year-round. And there was reference to neighboring communities that are doing similar things. I'd like to inform you that actually Hastings is doing the opposite right now. I'm in discussions with the Conservation Board, was at the mayor's house yesterday, and with, working with the trustee, where we're gonna improve our law. It was the first out there. It was a template where there's a total ban in the summertime. That was prior to battery-operated devices being available. So they are going to change, amend our law where we're going to have the battery, electric ones available to us in the same season. We're gonna try and marry up with the same times a year as other communities, so there's some consistency from village to village. But this seems to go in the opposite direction of the Irvington, and, I'm sorry, you're shaking your head.
I don't think it is, but keep going, keep talking. I, I may.
Okay, if I have any question, I'd be happy to address any question you may have. But Hastings is going to do the electric blowers. Here, the, the letter seemed to suggest that there was going to be a ban altogether, potentially, in the future, in the village of Irvington. And I don't understand how that can.
Gas blowers?
Correct.
That's, that, that is potentially what's gonna happen.
I don't understand how, in good conscience, people, I'm sure they're, they're, I mean, there's the cranky people, neighbors, and there's also the abusive contractors. But somewhere, this is where we're working in Hastings, to find a balance to educate both the, the people who are using these things to a higher level, even higher than the material that you have right now, how you can expect to have these businesses operate in Irvington and do their tasks in the spring and fall with equipment that simply cannot do it? When I reviewed your, your website and reviewed your material in July, a lot of it's very good, some of it's downright wrong, to suggest that somehow you can suddenly do this work, replace these power machines with rakes and booms in the autumn and spring. It literally just, it's not possible. The battery-powered equipment technology literally can't do it. It's good for summer sweeping, and that's what we use it for now, the electric stuff, but it cannot do the work in the spring and fall. It's absolutely impossible. And I don't know why you're just, you're ignoring those facts. It, it's frustrating to me further when I come to a meeting like this and I hear all this discussion about green policy task force, and green, 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 green. And yet, I look right on the tables in front of you, I see one used plastic bottles. And I say to myself, okay, in Hastings, we banned this a number of years ago, where there's, we went back to old-fashioned pitchers and glasses. So how can you once, at one time, say, we're doing this for environmental purposes, and yet, right before you is one of the worst things that we have on the planet is these plastic bottles. And you can go online, you can read all about that. So it seems to me the hypocrisy that goes on with this, seems like people are using their positions in a form of bullying versus actually having a truthful, honest discussion and exchange back and forth. Seems like the push around.
I think we're having a discussion right now. Are we not? I mean, we didn't say you couldn't talk about this. We're, we're open to hearing, and that's why we actually sent the letters, so we got this exact kind of dialogue.
Which is why I came up here immediately, the first meeting.
Right, so I think to say that we're trying to bully you is a little, take that a little.
Well, from, we can all have different perspectives, but from our, anybody, any contractor I've discussed this letter with, feels like they're pushing it, pushing it down on us.
This is the exact kind of cover. We, we didn't hear from anyone.
Right.
We, we talked about this till we were greeted in the face. We didn't hear from anybody. So we said, let's send out a letter and say, this is where the discussion's going, because we've had this many people for about 10 meetings talking about, we want to ban gas-powered regardless of time of year, time of use. And we keep saying, we don't think they can get the job done. We don't hear that. We actually, I thought you actually came in here and demonstrated how strong the, the electric.
That's the exact model that we used, we call, I call it, making a word for it, summer sweeping. 100% agreement for the summer hours, 100% agreement. We're doing this same thing in Hastings, 100%. And my position is, the, the punishment should be rather severe if you're gonna, and they're looking at ways to enhance enforcement, whether it's to the homeowner, the individual using it, the contractor. But this has sort of come to a point where it's absolute, you can't keep ducking your head in sand after 10 years and saying, oh, I didn't know about it. There's no such thing as I didn't know about it. But then there's also fair and reasonable about it, being able to have the right machine for the right time of year and not use the wrong machine at the wrong time of year.
And I think another, another piece of the puzzle is that if you went back five years ago, the electric blowers were much worse.
Correct.
In five years, they might be that much better. You might get the Tesla of electric blowers that, you know, has more power. We don't know what's gonna happen in five years. So I don't think this, this means that it's gonna be this fall that you're not gonna be able to use it, especially if we get a bunch of contractors to say, that come in and say, you know, there's no way we can, and I'm not talking about having the immaculate lawns that so many people like to have.
Insane.
So, you know, I think that that's the conversation we want to have. And I think that our letter has now had one person come in and talk about it, had come from Hastings. But, you know, I think it's, that's a success then for me, for sending out that letter.
Very good.
Because we want to hear from that, so.
We'd also add that our Parks Department is gonna be running a program where they're gonna be using electric equipment up at the O'Hara Nature Center and then report back to us about just how good or not, you know, how effective or not effective the equipment's gonna be.
Yeah, I think we actually discussed that back two, three years ago. Mr. Powell, could further sidewalks sweeping and so forth. There's no need to don't this big guessing and have this, this screaming noise. Right to a right application.
You also, you mentioned you had responded to a question, or a telephone call from somebody. Oh, you. Right, but I think that you asked some very important questions, and you got a good selection of people responding. And I think the, the responses you got are something we need to consider, even if people don't come directly back in response to our letter. You've had some important feedback from contractors I think we need to consider.
We've only gotten one other piece of feedback so far recently, which was about snow removal in the white area when it's an absolute emergency and they need to clear out the sidewalks quickly for large co-ops and things like that.
Yeah, for dust, for light dust, it's actually the most safest, most effective, because you only need the little slip film, and it really gets to the pavement.
So.
I, I must say, this gentleman, I didn't know who it was before tonight, very good conversation, very productive, very, very thoughtful person, our, our dialogue on the phone.
He would say he is typically very thoughtful.
No, it wasn't.
Nobody's ever said that.
He's in the minutes.
It was frank and honest, and it was a productive conversation.
Good, well, that's what we want to happen. I mean, nothing in this is set in stone. I mean, our parking laws, what we just talked about, that we spent 18 months to two years working on, we're still tweaking them. You know, so this is, you know, to me, what's, the nice thing about laws is we can change them, you know, and, and I think that it works kind of both ways. You know, like it's, as new technology comes in, we want to work on changing that to, you know, update for that. You know, I think it's, you know, I think it's, I think we also want to eliminate the bad actors.
100%.
Back blowers and C4 guys and backpack blowers, you know, like, all those things. So, I mean, I think it's all still a work in process.
So to just be clear, the way that you say, because I haven't been updated about what Hastings is doing, that they're going to be allowing gas blowers in the spring and fall windows, is that it?
Continuation of the laws it is, except that the dates are gonna change. They're going to, what I asked for is, if you could give to the memorial day Saturday. Most communities use June 1st. Hastings currently, it's May 15th. communities use June 1st. In Hastings currently, it's May 15th. So if you look at the calendar of how many actually...
Might be about the fall, how far in the fall was the change in that?
They were October 15th. They're actually going to creep it back, I think, to October 1st, October 15th, October 1st. That's probably September 15th, I believe. And so they're going to go June 1st to September 30th. This allows to keep, you know, make things tidy for Memorial Day, quiet Fourth of July, quiet Labor Day weekends. I was adamant about, okay, have a quiet Labor Day weekend.
So, but then you can use any time during that, during the exclusion window?
You can use, yeah, electric. Electric, meaning plug-in, a homeowner could use it, which currently a homeowner can't use even a plug-in in Hastings.
Well, we're talking about a battery or something.
And then the battery, the portable battery.
So, the other thing that I know has always been a problem, and I see, I wanted your take on it, is the block behind blowers.
Insanity.
Because what I see happening in my neighborhood, and I know it's been acted by other people in kind of more the denser downtown neighborhood or station road area, you'll see like a crew with two or three guys, two guys, let's say, with backpacks, and one guy that push behind, and they just, like, one of the more egregious things that go on is they're going from one property to maybe a couple doors down, they don't even, they don't turn off the equipment. They just idle down the street and...
So Irvington did a good job, a good first step, made a good foundation in terms of educational. We're going to try and take it next step higher. We'll grow from each other, doing an educational video, the dos and don'ts. A lot of people aren't reading it. We're going to make a mandatory, sort of like the county has, the mandatory...
That you watch this.
Pardon?
That you watched it.
No, no, we're going to create, but the county has a mandatory, yeah, mandatory for pesticide, I think, and, yeah, of course they do it, yeah, they have a license, so you do it. And if you don't do it, you're going to find the person right there on the spot doing it, then maybe something to the homeowner, and then also the business. It's called clampdown, clampdown time. There's, you know, this idea of the big blow, and I witnessed this on half-moon a couple years ago in May. Somebody's using, trying to get little crabapple leaves, screaming away the blower. I'm like, I'm sure that homeowner would forego those leaves if they could have the glass not rattled out of the kitchen cabinet. They don't care that much. But it's educating the labor force out there as to, you know, what can be done, where you still keep your job, businesses will get paid, and everyone's happier. Do less.
Does Hastings have an issue with enforcement?
All villages appear to have a...
That's a leading question. I was asking how they're going to address it.
How they're going to address it. Not sure, because we have a new mayor, we have a new village administrator. So there's going to be some retooling of how this is going to happen going forward, was my conversation with the mayor.
The mayor had reached out to me a month ago and wanted to see if we were interested in going on board with the Yonkers law. We actually discussed it at our works, actually about two months ago now. But that way you have consistency from Yonkers to say Tarrytown. Tarrytown said no, but we said we're open to discussing it.
Yeah, I... One thing I said about the idea of Yonkers, anything to do with Yonkers, that disaster down there, I don't really want to use it as a model for government. But as far as dates, compliance of dates, certainly that would be something that'd help if everyone had a greater uniformity. Things aren't that much different from Tarrytown to Yonkers in terms of seasonal issues with leaves. So dates, certainly that'd make things a lot easier. In terms of Yonkers, Yonkers has it where they just simply drive by enforcement. They see you and they mail you the bill. And it's rather draconian, I think, the way Yonkers does it. In Yonkers, you don't have a voice in town anyway. If you were to go speak, you wouldn't have a voice. I may take them on this winter. But it's, they're rather draconian, they don't want to hear about it.
You know, I'm wondering, because you obviously have given this deep thought and have a lot of experience in how this works. We spend a lot of time talking about this issue, but I'm wondering if it makes sense to at a different work session, perhaps, Tom, some of the other folks you talk to, or you summarizing, or you guys getting together first and thinking about specific proposals, because I'm not sure, you standing up there and, you know, trying to, you know, you're trying to give us some information and perspective. But I'm wondering if we could make it a little bit broader.
If Tom has that database and have a reading of...
Landscape works, you mean?
Yeah, have a couple of other people.
Hundred percent.
I know your report was circulated, but it was very useful information that I think we need to consider as we go forward.
Absolutely. And one thing that we're going to model after you is the whole idea of registration. You know, you register, and the concern is all paying a fee. I don't care if you pay a fee. Twenty-five dollars, not a great bit. Pay a fee, get on board, become a legitimate business, operate. And one of the things that suggests in the educational format is, many years ago, there was a lot of restriction put on spring, you know, the tree spraying people across the drift. Well, that's something visible, you see the mist and cloud. But people have to understand, sound wave's the same way, drifting. And if we can do some kind of visual thing to get some of these labor force out there, to understand, your sound, your dust is drifting, just like the mist spray.
Right, right. So could, would you come back another time?
Absolutely, anytime.
What do you think, should we put this in?
I'll schedule some.
Okay. And Tom, thank you for taking the initiative on those conversations.
No, not August. We also reached out to those guys, because they spoke last time.
I appreciate you hearing my voice. Thank you very much.
Joe, do you have any idea when Parks can give a report on their experiment?
Purchase order was done, the equipment's on order. We expect it to be delivered within a week to ten days, and we'll start using it right away. One of our plans is, once my guys get used to it, we're going to offer the public to go up there on a Saturday and get an idea, watch what they do, and see if they think it'd be effective.
Worst Oktoberfest ever.
But...
What kind of refreshment do you want?
If you have Captain Lawrence up there, nobody's here.
So we're going to, we're hoping to get the public up there, because we want to show people, we're very interested to see how impactful it'll be for us.
Yeah, I agree. We're all there.
What we do know is that we're comfortable, we found a good product, and we've buying from someone who also services the company that we're buying, which is important, because we don't want to be looking for someone that has to fix it, and we're buying across the board all still products as T-I-H-L.
And you're getting battery backpacks.
Backpack, backpack blower, a weed whacker. There's five pieces of equipment we bought, and we bought multiple batteries, because obviously the key is, as we've learned, if you, you know, if the battery runs out and you're halfway through your lawn, it's a long day. So you have to be ready to move on. And, you know, we think, one of our two horticulturists did some study for us and looked at it, and we're anxious. We said we'd probably have some info for you by September, and I think we're still on target for it.
Great. Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks for the tease.
Can I kind of just clarify something really quickly?
Sure.
Just for the record. So I carried out these conversations not as an advocate, but rather in response to requests from the board to reach out to a bunch of landscapers and to get their feedback on a number of different questions which a group of us put together. And I, the information that I sent to you, that, and if you read through the other side, it is evident that a community as large as Washington DC, which is a much larger municipality than Irvington, effectively banned gas leaf blowers year-round and did a phased-in, phased-in ban over three years of them. So, yeah.
Any other public comment not related to the public hearing?
Early...
Yeah, early blowers, which we've talked about more than we thought. Otherwise, we'll move to everyone's always popular consent agenda.
I just had a comment on the consent agenda. I regret that I wasn't here last week to add my vote to the approval of the Village Attorney McCain agreement.
It can't be, it's two to one.
Right.
One, nothing, two abstentions. Fairness not applied.
So the one thing that I saw, and I just, I mean, again, I know I get a little bit out of the agenda about it, but around the budget normalization of migrant transfers, it's just something, I can't find it.
I got it here.
Seventy?
Seventy?
Seventy.
It's all, it's deep into it because...
Okay, whatever. So I think it's, again, I'm confused, because I understand that number one is about, but it's transfers from surplus to fund capital projects, that line has... So how does surplus increase? Doesn't surplus decrease because that's the source of the money? I mean, it's just, it's just, I just need the names, and I just think the binding is wrong.
It's because all those progressions, you say, for all the...
Because you take ninety-four thousand out of surplus and you're putting it into the fire department and into capital fund, and then...
Then nothing's decreasing, is there?
Yeah, nothing's decreasing, so...
So what it, the way you appropriate, the way you appropriate surplus technically is you're increasing the surplus line, which is revenue, but it's not going to have any actual revenue coming in. So you're increasing the budget without any actual revenue coming in. So that's going to feed into your surplus. Boy, I can't explain it any better than that. I'm sorry. I...
So the accounting...
The budget, the budget entry as shown here is correct. If you increase a revenue without actually having any revenue, you're going to end up with a shortfall. So you're actually taking money from the revenue side, and you're using that over in, for the capital projects on the other side.
All right.
Like I said, I'm going to be happy to host a meeting with you too.
Be governmental, as county standard would be.
But that is the answer. You're increasing a revenue that doesn't have an actual revenue associated with it. You're increasing a budget associated with a revenue that will not come in, which will mean a shortfall. So you're using surplus.
You have to take the accounting...
I'll make emotional through the consent agenda if I can second all there. Continuation of public hearing, consider a local law amending the Irvington zoning code to curate the North Broadway mixed-use district. This is the...
Public hearing.
Clear, public hearing.
I don't know, Charlie.
We'd love to.
But we're still listening to comments from the public, from property owners, from people from Hastings that like leaf blowers, whatever we get. Otherwise, we'll continue to keep the meeting open until September.
Definitely.
At least, when people get back, wherever they are. It's less warm than here. All right, so there's no comments, we'll move on to a kind of a set note, which is approval of resignation from the planning board. After many years of excellent dedicated service, Pat Metterelli has decided to fully retire. You know, he's served for, I think, three decades in different capacities in Irvington, as well as his day job as a planning, which has made him such a valuable member. And not only that, he also ran a good meeting, which isn't always the same thing, having expertise and running a good meeting. I'm over two. But, you know, it is a big blow. It's not going to be easy to replace, you know, and I don't think we'll be able to get him to stick around, so. But anyway, resolve. Thank you so much, Pat, for all your years of service to the county and especially to the village. But resolve to set with regret the resignation of Pat Metterelli from the planning board effective December 2019. I'll make a motion, have a second. Second, all in favor. Next is renewal of prisoner transportation reimbursement agreement with Westchester County. This is always a very exciting bill.
Yeah, this is exactly, exactly the same agreement.
To increase our reimbursement amount?
Don't believe so.
Prisoner surplus.
Well, this could have gone down a couple years ago.
That's right, yeah.
So I'll just read this, determine any questions about our prisoner transports. Whereas the Village of Irvington continues to transport prisoners to and from the county jail, and wishes to receive reimbursement for portion of the overtime costs associated with that activity. And whereas the village previously approved an intermunicipal agreement with the county, and whereas the party wished to continue the agreement from January 1st, 2019, and December 31st, 2020, and whereas the agreement has been reviewed, I'm sorry, we have reviewed and approved by the police chief and the village attorney, have therefore been resolved to approve the prisoner transportation reimbursement agreement between the Village of Irvington and Westchester County, and to authorize the village administrator to execute said agreement. I'll make the motion if I have a second.
Okay.
All in favor.
Aye.
Next, we have an amendment to provisional period. Larry, excuse the technicality?
Yeah, this is just a correction of the resolution. So when the officers were appointed at the last meeting, the new officers that you appointed, we indicated a fifty-two week maximum provisional period, or...
Calm you, or...
No, it's just they, and maybe that's why it is seventy-eight weeks, but the maximum for new officers not promoted or transferred is actually seventy-eight weeks. So they've actually been notified of this already, but I wanted to make sure the paperwork flowed through your board here.
Yeah, my guess is that it's because they're, you know, in training. They don't have any interaction with their folks until they get back here.
Right, that's probably why. But that's, those are what the rules are, so.
Yeah. And it was so long. Oh, thank you. I was going to say, but... The charge is on probation. The charge is office corrected. Revolve, revolve, revolve to revise the probationary period for Thomas J. DeCamply and Anthony L. Nardoe to be not less than twelve weeks and not more than seventy-eight weeks. I will make a motion if I have a second. All in favor.
Other rights issues, I suppose.
Yes, I'm good. Approval of contract for architectural design services. See, we moved this up, Larry.
We asked? Yeah, yeah. So we actually, David Tetra is, was the original architect on nineteen oh two, some of the past, some of the past work that we did on the clock tower.
We're using Mijay Boardic.
And some of the roof work that we did as well, so back in the mid-two thousands. So he's intimately familiar with the building. So we both, it made a lot of sense to go back to him, so.
So he's not going to be overseeing the construction?
No, what happened, he put together the full proposal. He likely will, but at this point, we're signing an agreement for this. We, you know, we don't have the funds approved yet for the next phase of this. We don't need approval for design work, for the capital budget. So, you know, just being technical about it, we've stuck with just the design work.
Does he understand this?
I think he does, yes. And I'm sure that he'll be requested to give a formal proposal for the oversight.
I hope he can.
Yeah, we'll have some evidence, but...
Why, why, this country?
So.
Resolve to approve contract twenty nineteen thirteen with David A. Tetra, Architect PC, located three oh two Lewis Avenue, Yorktown, HSN, York, one oh five nine eight, for architecture and design services related to the clock tower rehabilitation project. I'll make motion if I have a second.
Second.
All in favor. Thanks, Larry, for bringing that up. I think it's important to get that going. Every minute.
The clock up there.
Yeah, and the leaves from...
The leaves.
They can't have singing in the rain for every protection reason.
Oh, God.
It's right up in the last year.
Save your best.
Approval to change the estimated expenditure for the twenty eighteen nineteen. Snow and ice cream with the New York State Department of Transportation.
So just, you've seen this maybe more than a few times. The, we have a standard agreement in order, in order to plow Broadway, and they base it on a standard reimbursement rate, and then after the winter's over, they determine exactly how many road lane miles have been plowed by the state on their roads, and we get reimbursed for those, you know, for the number of occurrences. So this revises the contract upwards by the amount indicated on it.
It never gets revised downward, or something?
No, it does a base amount, yeah.
Whereas the Village of Irvington, the New York State Department of Transportation adverted to an agreement providing for the village's removal of seven minutes of north and south Broadway, from not to take up the... Now therefore, there was no, I read it, I made it up.
All right.
Resolve that due to the severity of the winter during twenty eighteen nineteen, the estimated expenditure was revised to reflect additional lane miles of state roads that are plowed treated during the winter season. As per the attached amendment, authorize the superintendent of Public Works, Greg Nielsen, to execute said amendments. I'll make the motion if I can second. Second, all in favor.
Three thousand dollars, probably, so not...
The severe was incorrect.
Yeah.
Slightly worse.
Yeah.
Reports of boards, standing committees, and officers. Trustee liaison reports.
Yeah, I have nothing, just the green policy, county green policy. The tree commissioner is meeting in a local history room, seven fifteen, and wants to see the operation of the board, or interested in volunteering for the board.
Okay.
It's like seven fifteen to nine o'clock, my break was.
I'm getting it out. Save the date for Oktoberfest two thousand nineteen, the Saturday, June twenty-eighth, in Matheson Park. We would love to get some more sponsorships, contact Joe Argino. Repairs to the tennis courts at Memorial Park are completed, and the results were great. There was a little bit of inconvenience, but...
There was a little bit of inconvenience, but this was the best time to get it done. And if anyone's seen it, it does look great. Summer hours for the Parks and Rec Department, this Friday, August 9th, they will open at 9, close at 4. Regular hours will resume on September 3rd. I see this is in lunch tomorrow, August 6th. Day camp concluded another successful season last Friday. This is the last week of session number two of Teenscape. Building of the benches for the O'Hara and Nature Center outdoor classroom is underway. Full program brochure is being worked on and they'll be out soon. Residents are asked to please pick up and take their dog bags with them when in the woods and on the trails. And please remember, dogs must be on leash when in the woods or all seacon. I did mention last time and I'll mention again, thanks to Chief Serone and the police department. There are officers now that are going into the parks, to Alzy and to the woods. And summonses have been issued to people who are in violation of the leash law. They have to carry dogs. We still, if we told you how they were dressed.
They were wearing the bulldog outfit from my. Or at least.
Oh, okay. Theater, theater, theater. All right, the season will start off again in September.
Seeing rain for next six months.
Right from the clock tower, on time, the rain. September 14th, this is a, the theater is working with Parker Riley and John Chapman. And on this date, they are presenting, I've heard him, the master storyteller Jonathan Bruck. I'd have heard him with Halloween based things and Christmas things. So Greg Helen also wanted you all to know that the conference he went to in Philadelphia, it was on historic theaters. So we are a historic theater. And he reports that he gathered a whole lot of wealth of information about aspects of running historic theaters. There are a lot of them. And as you know, there's a fundraising project, Friends of the Irvington Theater. And they're interviewing fundraising consultants. And of course, that's going to be paid by the fundraiser. These are numerous, there are numerous technical and building upgrades going on. There's something being done that I don't quite understand. It's kind of technical, replacing a new CYC, sic, retractable track. Since water from the roof always rubs in, to paint touch-ups, new trash cans at the back of the house. All right, so that was the theater and Jim Englishby. It's all the usual kind of summer maintenance. They're even painting the fire hydrants, jetting the sewers, removing the old valve. And they repaired a water main on Riverview Road Booster Station. Wait, remove the old valve and repair the water main. Oh, for the river, okay, I get it. Pumped out the catch basin that connects to a pipe that goes under the tracks at Art's and Train Station. And they're still working on that Riverview Road Booster Station, some details about that. And the Hudson View Culvert, we talked about that before, is still progressing. And the contractor is working this week installing the sewer portion of that project. Greg Nielsen's report on the highway. So they've been watering the trees and the flower boxes and assisting the rec and parks department at the nature center. Assisting the contractors with the North Broadway and Heritage, oh, you didn't say anything about that, I've seen that. The Crosswalk Project at Heritage Hill?
We're waiting for it to be completed, all right, a big celebration.
Yeah, okay. And he's, and Greg is also working on, with the contractor, with the Hudson View Park Culvert replacement project. Everybody's seen that. There was a collapsed wall in the party, repaired the collapsed wall in the party broke on South Buckout Street by the waterfall. Trimming and clearing grows around the village traffic signs, painting lines, catch basins, filling potholes. Okay, that's it.
Village court, total of charges received, 107 from, we're talking 6-1 to 8-2, and charges disposed 154. As usual, the vast majority were vehicle and traffic. Total money collected, $30,845 in fines and with addition of surcharges and civil fees, $40,895,000 remitted to the state controller. For the library, as well as the resignation that Brian talked about, mold remediation continues. And as you, anybody who's been through mold remediation knows, this is very typical. More areas of mold have been discovered on the east and south walls. The air conditioner handling units have been replaced, so it is cool in the library. Matter of fact, it's now reported to be a little too chilly in the library. Library window restoration has been going well.
Oh, they're meticulous. Oh, my gosh.
The children's summer reading program, which is called The Universe of Stories, has over 100 kids registered. This is a record breaker. And if you want to spend six minutes to feel good about something, there is a video. You can go to the library and ask to see it, or YouTube, but I don't know how to get this to you. But it's called The Stuffed Animals Sleepover. And the kids come in with their stuffed animals, they put them to bed in a tent. And then the video shows that all the interesting things these stuffed animals do in the morning before the kids come back. It is really adorable and very effective, I would imagine. Fire department, 31 calls this month, 192 years, calls year-to-date. There was a tree fire in South Al, Astor and Buckout. Old calls are increasing, ladder 36 is at New England Fire for Maintenance, unknown EPA for return.
Oh, is that?
See, I don't get it. Okay. Post-testing, pump testing will be happening very soon. In July, they were training in ladder operations, pump training. And next month, this is August, they're going to be talking about responding to hospitals, marine corps and tabletop decision-making. Best practices and policies are renewed, and this is obviously something that is ongoing and occurs regularly. The port security boat grant, do we know if that came in yet? They're expecting that. Not today, so they're expecting to hear about that any day now. And second floor restoration remains, second floor restoration?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll, there's a, there's a, what do you call it, a press release about this, so you might have seen it. But yesterday, someone brought a cannonball to police headquarters. So the fire department was on standby, IED was on standby, door trip was explosive or not. The county, county bomb squad came, it was just a decorative kind of cannonball, but it looks like it yesterday, so.
Oh, really?
It was uncovered by a resident.
I don't think it was an explosive.
No, but they weren't sure. They weren't sure what was in it, so.
I just wanted to say about the library.
I'm saying about the what?
The library, that I've been using the both Canopy and Hooplot, which are the video streaming services you can get through the library if you have a library card. And it's quite good. I was watching a bunch of things from sources that you would never think about. But they have, they have Criterion Collection, I think, on Canopy. They have all these great stuff and it's free. You just need to sign up with the library card number. It's through the Westchester Library Service.
They have to watch it on a little screen?
No, 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 you can watch it on your.
Smart.
Well, you have to, you have to have a TV, way to get it, like if you have.
Roku or Fire Stick or Apple TV.
Or you can, you know, air, you can cast it across from your phone or your iPad or whatever, but it's good. And I was amazed, they, at the range of what's available.
Check out your local library, it's cool. And don't forget, you can get the passes to all those museums.
Which is good, too.
You save a lot, you really save a lot. Anyway.
They're looking into it for us. So just a quick update. There was, in response to a complaint through our observation of some of the conditions on Main Street, especially around the tree wells. The Public Works Department, they go out and do a, you know, a quick hit, if you will, and got caught up in that area. They still asked for summer help. Longer term, though, they are reaching out to some landscapers and put out like a little mini RFP, just to get an idea of what this might cost. I don't think it's going to be too expensive, but, you know, just so we have an idea.
And we're not using Roundup.
It looks great. I saw them working with the weeds.
Gas powder.
They might be going the grass with leaf blows, but I didn't swear to it.
I saw, I saw some cutting of the weeds.
Anyway.
It looked good.
That's it? Yes. Village attorney's report? Public comments? So there's a fairly lengthy list here, so obviously all the client's smart certification and organizing between, especially the task force and the way forward on it with a coordinator will be figured out. The consultant will be identified, well, at least the sculpt will be identified for the traffic analysis for the Astor Gateway area. I made a note to myself, I'm not sure it's really a follow-up item, but quarterly updates on the status of the priorities at future meetings. I'll be prompting you to throw in your ideas about potential uses for the sales tax money. And a future work session, I do want a clarification, a future work session on leaf blowers. But I thought I was, heard you say September, but then someone said that'll be right in leaf season. So did you say November, Brian, or did you say September for the date?
Right, it's September.
You said September, yeah. I wasn't sure if I.
But I just want to make sure that we can get a report from the parks department about their use of.
That's important.
Well, I don't think, at a time, as long as it's going to be prepared in time for them. Well, I'll get a feeling where they are on it, yeah.
I have one that I'd like to add. I think now that we've chastised, we need to go back to bottle, to water and pitchers.
That's actually, that's a very good.